Welcome everyone back to our open session, part of our evening meeting. We did have closed sessions starting at 5 o'clock and we discussed conference with our district labor negotiation and that was it. So, we will now start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and I'd like Scott Faiet to lead it for us.
If you can stand and move any hands, put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We're going to start probably the most popular item of the board meeting and we'll have our student board rep report. Joseph, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam President Cattulli, esteemed board members, Dr. Pulver, any community members watching in person or online, and present supporters. My name is Joseph Claypool and I'm your student representative to the Board of Education from Los Alamos High School. To start off, I would like to highlight a particular week of the year where all schools of Los Alamos unified, come together and say no to drugs. This week, of course, is Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week was from October 21st until October 25th and started at the high school with dress out days for students. On the left side of my presentation, you can observe the different outfits Griffins wore to school each day during the week. Additionally, ASB led lunchtime activities that involved both staff and students. Monday, students had the opportunity to bite a donut off of a string that was suspended in the air without ever touching it. While on Tuesday, an exciting day, game of musical chairs commenced. On Wednesday, hundreds of students gathered right in front of the PAC since the school had brought a DJ and a famous influencer. Finally, the favorite of all activities probably, came on Friday when students had the opportunity to pie staff members who volunteered right in the face. Don't worry though, the pies looked so delicious, I wish I got pieed in the face as well. Students were also given wristbands they love to collect that displayed the message, "Say no to drugs." All of these activities serve as a reminder to the fun, safe environment a drug-free campus establishes. Although Red Ribbon Week only occupies one week of the school year, the ability to say no to drugs is a year-long regard for both students and staff. Normally, students under the age of 18 would not be able to vote in this election. However, Ms. Hinz's 4th and 5th period AP Government and Politics class had the unique opportunity of voting. Don't worry, there's no fraud going on here, we were just holding back, holding a mock election. The day after the election, every student in the classroom had the ability to see what an official ballot looks like. The main difference between the real and mock elections was that students recorded their responses on a Google form instead of sample ballots. Mrs. Hinz compared students' responses to the actual election results on propositions and candidates. Some numbers were similar and some were different. Outside of the nation, outside of the election, the students have been studying the interactions between the three branches of government, the legislative, executive, and judicial branches. Furthermore, students are tasked with taking notes in class presented by Mrs. Hinz, who elaborates while presenting a slide presentation. Another fun, unique trait of the classroom is the back wall that is displayed in the middle of the picture of my slide. Students here have the option of posting some sort of political cartoon or meme that captures a recent event that relates to the current unit of study. The students are now in their final unit of the class, studying the civil liberties and rights established through historic Supreme Court decisions. The election has provided a fun, engaging activity for students as they look to close out their study of American government and politics while awaiting the challenge of macroeconomics next semester. Next, I would like to give a shout out to our incredible girls golf team this year who have officially been crowned Sunset League champs for the 7th year in a row. Compared to the other 7 years however, this year is special, since for the first time in the team's history, the team has been able to go undefeated in league. This honor does not come easily. The girls must practice every day at Old Ranch Driving Range after school in order to perfect their craft. Coach Haygood, who is also a part of our high school's math department, oversees all of girls golf, being their head coach. Apart from practicing at the driving ranges, Coach Haygood makes sure to have the varsity team practice weekly at the Navy's Destroyer Course while the JV team plays at the Navy's Cruiser Course. One of the team's core traditions is a team selfie where Coach Haygood intentionally crops himself out of the picture with only his hat showing after every win. The girls on the team often play with different partners throughout the season and therefore become close friends as a team. The team wraps up their historic season with their banquet this Thursday. Girls golf is just another testament to the athletic excellence instilled here at Los Back in October, right before Halloween, our high school's orchestra opened with their spectacular concert at McGaw Elementary. The entire concert lasted for about 2 hours where both the string and chamber orchestra played modern classics like "This is Halloween" from "The Nightmare Before Christmas" and older classics like "Holberg Suite." Along with the chosen pieces, members of each orchestra and the conductors made sure to dress up in their Halloween costumes to match the festivity of the concert. For example, in chamber orchestra, all first-chair violinists decided to wear costumes depicting different Scooby Doo characters while the viola players dressed up as girls from the movie "Mean Girls." Mr. Padilla, who conducts our chamber orchestra, was dressed up in a masked costume while Mr. Bunshin, who conducts our string orchestra, was dressed up as Edward Scissorhands. This spectacular concert requires months of preparation by the students, teachers, and the booster club. Every day during 5th period, students can be found practicing a piece for their next concert. Practicing in school however is not sufficient enough in order to master the challenging pieces for each concert. Every student takes some time each day at home to rehearse and improve their own craft. Students along with Mr. Padilla and Mr. Bunshin collaborate in order to pick certain pieces that can challenge students but also relate to the theme of their next concert. Outside of high school and the Los Al community, orchestra has made trips across the country. This year, they are planning to visit San Francisco and will have the privilege to play there. As of right now, they're already starting to plan for their next concert, the Nutcracker, and if you can make it, be sure to check it out. What is an event almost every Griffin loves? Final exams! Just kidding, maybe not so much. However, most Griffins would in fact agree that they do love the CIF football playoff games. Before the start of each game, the boosters of the football team make sure to open up a snack shack and invite multiple food trucks. Students in ASB make sure to arrive at the game early in order to hang up posters, decorate the bleachers, and participate with song and cheer for our famous wartime chant. ASB is also in charge of deciding the theme for each football game. For the game against Lusinger, the theme was "Back in Black," while against Murrieta Valley, it was "White Out." Both of these themes were student favorites since everyone could participate easily. After ASB has set everything up, the students and parents begin to pour into the stands. For the first time in my high school experience, my peers and I have had the privilege to watch a CIF football playoff game here at Los Al. This was largely possible due to the addition of portable bleacher stands on the far side of the field where the opposing team's supporters watched. The student section continuously matches the energy of the team roaring at each touchdown they scored. At halftime, students also had the opportunity to participate in games such as tug of war or a potato sack race. Although the football season has officially ended, the unique experience of hosting 2 CIF football playoff games here at our high school was truly an unforgettable experience for everyone who attended. Lastly, let me introduce to you a Griffin who takes pride in all activities he partakes in, Hiram Ha. Hiram started out as a Hopkinson Husky, growing into an Oak Lion, and now a Griffin. Hiram is committed to our high school's excellent jazz program in which he has played trumpet for all 4 years. On his own, Hiram leads a club on campus called Science Mentors that is targeted to help students studying mathematics or sciences. In the classroom, Hiram has worked his way up to having one of the most academic rigorous coursework, taking more than 10 AP classes in his time here at Los Al. On his own time, Hiram is in love with music. Hiram not only plays the trumpet as I previously mentioned, but has also played the guitar and piano for a multitude of years. He puts his musical talent to good use by playing for his church every weekend and volunteering to teach others how to play. His favorite memory so far at Los Al has been this year's homecoming football game where he got to experience, which he got to experience with his friends. For the rest of the year, he helps to branch out and formulate new friendships while also making as many memories as possible. After graduation, Hiram hopes to attend UCLA with the intent to become a doctor in the near future. Ultimately, Hiram has managed a delicate balance with academics, activities, and his extracurricular life in an astonishing way. However, his humorous, warm-hearted personality is what sticks to not only me but also everyone that surrounds him. With that, I would like to open the floor to any questions or comments from the board.
Mrs. Hill.
Thank you. And Joseph, I just want to say that you are a very good storyteller because I could really envision what the setup of a football game looked like and I just really appreciate that you could draw those pictures for us and not just use the photographs but also use words. It was beautiful. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Now, thank you so much, Joseph. I always look forward to your reports and it's just fun to see what the kids are doing and I really liked the slide with the pies in the face. That was really good. I thought that was great. Thank you so much. Dr. Pulver, did you want to add anything? No? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. It's always a pleasure to be able to follow Joseph who does such a great job and I always loved the student highlights. I also really appreciated how you talked about the elections and some of the activities that our teachers engage in. And I know I happened to be on a walk-through at one of our schools along with a couple board members on Election Day. And we were at Oak Middle School and to be able to walk through some of the social studies classes and really seeing the teachers trying to teach the Electoral College to middle school kids is, I think many adults don't understand the Electoral College fully. But it was great to see and so many of them really actively engaging and using our civic engagement as a teachable moment for our students. I am pleased to share, since our last board meeting, myself and President Cattulli and Vice President Davidson joined our Teacher of the Year who was celebrated at Disneyland Hotel, Schools First Credit Union, and a generous donation from a family that's been really recognizing Teachers of the Year throughout Orange County for numerous years. Got to recognize and Ms. Lisa Haygood was our District of the Teacher of the Year last year and she moved all the way up through the county process. And so, the county, it seems like 2025 or nailing into 2025 is because by the time they get to the state level, it will be 2025. And so, I think there were, there's 1 or 2 finalists from Orange County that moved up to the state level. But we had a great time along with Dr. Wishright at the Disneyland Hotel, just recognizing amazing teachers who give so much. You can't help but to be inspired when you walk out of that room hearing all the different stories of people who really serve youth and enrich their lives. Congratulations to Lisa, we're very proud of you as our District Teacher of the Year and representing us well. And then, as I've been trying to share, we've started this program the last 2 years or so where we do recognize Employees of the Month and we call it the Rock Star of the Month and our middle school art students actually hand paint. Every rock is unique and different. And so, I wanted to announce our Rock Stars of the Month for the month of September. We were able to surprise Ms. Jen Ramirez, who is our PE and cheer coach at Los Alamos High School, but she really also organizes the halftime show that incorporates so many different performing arts to come together. She organizes the St. Jude fundraiser that creates a cheer clinic for kids and you should just see the sea of little kids in their cheer uniforms and it just takes a lot of work for someone who goes above and beyond to just really connect with kids and super positive. So, we're pleased to be able to recognize her. And the nice thing about all of our Rock Stars of the Month is they're nominated by fellow employees. And it was one of our newest employees who nominated Jen, which I think is just so neat to see. And then Heather Sherrill, who works in our Special Education Team as an administrative assistant, who just goes above and beyond, receives so many nominations from various teachers and psychologists across the district who just really appreciate all the big and little things that she does and how she juggles everything to really just serve the needs of our students and staff who support students with special needs. So, she's just such a gem and we were pleased to recognize her. And then in October, we got to recognize Dan Bennett, who is our Ed Tech Coordinator. And I tell you, almost every month that gentleman gets nominations from teachers because he is just always behind the scenes simplifying technology or glitches in software or teaching them how to effectively use Google Classroom or Aries, Graybook, or Illuminate, or all sorts of platforms now. And so, Dan is always just, goes above and beyond, completely willing to step in and help anyone and so we're really pleased to recognize him. And then Melinda Pineda, who's our school nurse at McCalliff Middle School, but before that, she was at McGaw. And she just always services kids with a variety of health issues, with a smile, with a warm embrace, warm touch to just make sure that kids feel safe, calling families when they need, when emergencies happen. And so, it gives such confidence, I think, to our staff and to our parents knowing that we have licensed vocational nurses, many of them who are also actual RNs, who are there to help care and provide support for our kids. So, congratulations to our Rock Stars of the Month. And then, I was making sure this slide didn't go past it. We're going to be spending the next portion of our meeting just shortly, really as a board and as a community, to say thank you to 2 extraordinary public servants. And that's what I think really people are when they serve on the board. It is often a thankless job and I think the last 4 years particularly, in the height of different conflict and much celebrations, I would say as well, I think it really elevates individuals who give freely back to their community. You know, it's hard to be elected official. I see a few in the room here tonight who are also here to recognize from R C S D in Steel Beach and Los Alamos. And you know, shopping in your neighborhood and you see people, your neighbors, you know, you're always peppered with questions and I think we're just so fortunate. We had a ceremony this afternoon for the community as well. We had a large crowd show up at our training room, 4 and 5, where we had a community reception to really honor both Ms. Cattulli for her 24 years of service and Scott Faiet for his last 4 years of service on the board. And I'll say this about all of our board members, you know, I've been fortunate to, you see boards across the county and state, and the amount of activities that our board do beyond here at a board meeting, the walkthroughs, the sporting events, the assemblies, reading to students, handing out lunches, whatever it happens to be, they are just involved like I've never seen a board. So, they definitely put in a lot of time and service and I think that's one of the best gifts that we can give. And so, I want to thank both of you and we'll spend a little bit more formal time shortly there. And lastly, or almost lastly, we thought we would, while the election's not fully certified, it does seem very clear in the results of the election who our new board members will be as Ms. Cattulli and Mr. Faiet are leaving the board on their own volition. And so Faraz Farnaz, seems to be readily elected to trustee Area 4 and so I thought it'd be nice to just share a little about who our new board member will be, starting in December. So Faraz, she brings a unique blend of experience. She's a parent and a volunteer leader. She has served as well on the LEAF Board for numerous years. PTA, which is Meg, that's how you, actually fun fact, both Meg and Scott were PTA presidents at McCalliff, that I just realized and learned when we were doing a walkthrough at McCalliff last week. And so, a lot of school board members have gotten, you know, their start in being a PTA leader because really PTA people just go above and beyond to, it's almost like a full-time job to serve all kids and not just their own. And so, that certainly has been something that Faraz has done. And prior, in her personal business life, she's spent 15 years of experience as an executive and management consultant for different companies and Fortune 500 companies. She has 3 kids in the district, 1 at each level, middle school, elementary, and the high school. And so, we are excited to be able to welcome Faraz onto the board come December 17th board meeting. And he is in the room. The other board member who's been elected, it looks like through the results of the election, is Mr. Matt Bragman. And it says Matthew there, but I did ask him, I think he prefers to go as Matt. And so, Matt as well, he's been a teacher and so really has spent his career in education in numerous capacities, been a school administrator, principal, and other roles of administration along the road. And then the past 6 years, he's been a leader in nonprofit sector that really still is education-related, working for Project Lead the Way, working for Clon Classroom, and also has a child in our district who's a 5th grader at McGaw. And so, we're really excited that we'll be have 2 board members coming onto the board who will have current kids that are within the school system as well because I think that gives another perspective. All of you have obviously had your kids and grandkids in our system, but it's also a little bit different when you have your own. And so, Matt's been on the McGaw School Site Council, involved in PTA, he's on our District Operations Steering Committee, and then all sorts of community involvement that you see there as a YSO coach and other things. So, we're pleased to be able to welcome Mr. Bragman on our board come December 17th as well. And Matt, wave your hand so the community can see. And lastly, I think, you know, one of the things we love to celebrate are holidays, particularly holidays that bring loved ones, families, and connections together. And so, obviously next week, our schools are closed, our district office will be closed as well, but we just want to extend a very season of gratitude with our deep appreciation and wish all of our families and students a wonderful and happy Thanksgiving. And I'm going to turn it back over to you, Ms. Cattulli.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pulver. We're now going to go on to our recognition items and it is going to be my honor to recognize Scott Faiet. So, Scott, will you join me at the podium?
Okay, I am going to talk a little bit about Scott's tenure on the board. I think of Scott as the stealth ninja of board members. He prefers to go quietly about the business of supporting students and staff without any fanfare. He doesn't always notify sites that he's coming. He just, he doesn't want, we're like going to performances, school visits, and more formal special recognitions, but he is known to show up because he saw a need or he heard about a need. Scott always does his board homework and he would ask questions when he had any. The rest of the board knows he can be relied on to voice his opinions and bring to value to our discussions and keep what is best for our students as a test for every one of his decisions. I'm going to now touch on some of the district accomplishments that have occurred while Scott was on the board. And both Scott and I and everyone in this room knows that it isn't done by an individual but by an entire team. But Los Al High School has been rated in the top 200 schools in the nation according to the U.S. News &amp; World Report, and I found out today that Weaver, Lee, and Hopkinson are in the top 100 schools in the nation according to U.S. News &amp; World Report, which is incredible because that's 100,000 elementary schools to come up that high. We've had for 2 years 100% graduation rate and 88% of our graduates completed by either taking an advanced placement, career technical ed, or dual enrollment class. We have refinanced our bonds several times since even before Scott was on there to save our taxpayers now up to almost $42 million in taxes. We have used the bond money wisely and now we have a state-of-the-art 3-story STEM building that is in use and a much-needed second gym is under construction. We have also modernized all of our campuses. We have air conditioning, wireless connections, infrastructure upgrades, new playgrounds at all elementary sites, solar panels, increased security and safety, and we have fencing, video surveillance, visitor management, and child check system on our buses so we don't never leave a child behind there. And with our partnering with LEAF, we have well spaces and counselors in the well spaces to staff all of our sites. We have a one-to-one technology program at the high school. These are things that we are all proud of, everyone in the district, but I want to go back to the stealth ninja part of Scott. He's helped cafeteria staff serve spaghetti to middle schoolers. He has handled out churros to high school students. He has helped set up for a carnival at an elementary school because he knows an extra set of hands is always welcomed. He goes on Entrepreneur Day to see what the kids have come up to, they think they can sell. He's watched the robotics club in action. And I think he was the first board member to go to a women's flag football game? I think so. Yeah, and I can say I was really happy he was there when I went to a game because he explained the rules to me. They're a little different. After visiting classrooms at Oak, I saw Scott break away from the crowd that was going through the classrooms so he could help the custodian set up for an assembly. You never have to ask Scott to help something, you have to ask him to stop. Is he that way at home? No? Okay. I think every board member's favorite part of the meeting are the school presentations. We usually get a choir performance, a presentation that incorporates students and principals. If Scott was the last board member to make a comment about this presentation, he might say, "Ditto to all that's been said," or "That's just fantastic." And it's not because he couldn't think of another superlative adjective to describe what has taken place, but because he truly feels he doesn't need to repeat what has been said. He doesn't need to make a comment. The students are the important and what we should focus on. And I need to bring up everyone's favorite time in education, COVID. Everyone in the world was on an uncharted ground and Los Al took 2 weeks off to pivot to be in an online school. And I have to give a shout out to our entire staff for that Herculean effort that was occurred then. When we did start returning to a hybrid form of in-person education, the board was able to hear from a lot of parents who thought that wearing masks was a terrible thing versus the parents who thought wearing masks wasn't enough. Scott handled the situation well while listening and explaining the rules under which the state supported schools to be reopened for in-person teaching. Regardless of who was upset, Scott, you showed grace under pressure. There is no 100% correct answers, but supporting students to the top of his ability was always your goal and you did it 100% of the time. Scott Faiet is a man of personal integrity who does things for the right reasons. And on the school board, the reasons we do anything are the students in the seats in our classrooms. Whatever that can be done to support the learning of all of our students was the most important thing to Scott. You have set the bar pretty high for future board members. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, my granddaughter, all of staff, all of our students, thank you so much for your commitment and time and dedication to the kids in Los Al.
I would like to ask the other board members to make a comment before you get to Scott. Oh, you're coming up already? Okay, all right, we'll start then with Chris.
All of the board members know that behind every board member is a significant other or a true friend who put up with a lot of stuff. So, you get one of our official medals. Scott got the gold, you're getting the silver.
Okay, then I'll start with Mrs. Hill.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Scott, although your tenure has been brief, it has truly been unforgettable. I admire your passion for kids and everything that they are involved in. You've brought attention to many unique and remarkable things our students do, shining a light on their achievements in their activities. You are both a champion and a cheerleader and your enthusiasm, complete with logo shirts and hats, has been such a joy to see. In your 4 short years, although I'm sure there are moments that haven't felt like that, you've been on a roller coaster ride, but you have always held yourself to the highest standard. Your family's unwavering support of you and the district, even during challenging times, is truly commendable. Thank you so much for your service and I am confident that we are going to see you at performances. And I really do appreciate, Scott, all that you've done and the years of service that you've given to this district, but also really the last 4 years that you've been a board member. Thank you very much for being who you are.
Oh, okay, Ms. Davidson.
So, Scott, you've wrestled with some tough times while you've been on the board, as we all have, and what there's just, this is like not fun. There's a lot to be said for the little moments when people display their true character and time and again, over the last 4 years, you've proven yourself to be so chivalrous, such a gentleman, so kind and yet strong. And for me, it was little things. In San Francisco, we're there for 4 days, I stupidly brought high heels. I can't walk in high heels normally and the convention was 2 miles away. By the second day, my feet were screaming and... By the second day, my feet were screaming, and everybody was going out at the end of the day for a little celebration. But Scott, I said, "No, I'm going to Macy's, I have to get tennis shoes." And Scott said, "You're not going alone." So he skipped the fun, and he walked the two miles with me to Macy's and then back to the hotel. That's just the kind of person that he is. He cares, he doesn't need the limelight, he's never needed it in his role on the board. But he is a person, you are such a person of incredible integrity, character, and courage. And there have been, there's been more than one time that your perspective changed our point of view. Because when you speak, you speak with such intelligence, wisdom, and what's most important about it, it is a truth from your heart. So it has truly been an honor to serve on this board with you. And I, like Diana, look forward to all the times we're going to see you and all those activities you love to go to anyway. So thank you, Scott, for being a tremendous board member and friend. Thank you.
Kristy, have something you'd like to say?
Ditto, ditto. Especially telling me how flag football works. That was the best. But Scott, you've always had my back, and I appreciate you, and I consider you a friend. I consider you a positive influence to all of us. So thank you and best of luck.
Well, I think, you know, as we prepared some marks, you know, Scott, clearly who you are as an individual is consistent and authentic. Because I think as you hear us all speak, you're hearing very similar themes of really who you are and the service that you've provided to this community. You know, and I just would say that, Scott, you've been a fierce advocate for students, tirelessly championing their academic success, their mental health, and opportunities to connect through the arts, performing arts, and extracurricular activities. He was always one speaking at the dais about the different programs, performing arts showcases, and he would go to all of them, elementary, middle school, and high, and just the time and the attention you would give to that. Your passion for student success is matched by his humility, which I know a lot of us have kind of talked about. And I mentioned as well where Scott prefers to stay behind the scenes, always willing to roll up his sleeves, whether it's setting up for events. Sounds similar, right, Meg? Helping with cleanup or attending numerous activities across the campuses. He consistently puts the spotlight where it belongs, and that's on our students, staff, and families, and not on him. Scott played a pivotal role during one of our most challenging periods in education. As a part of the board, he ensured that our district provided both in-person and virtual school options during the pandemic, prioritizing the health and safety and the educational needs and mental health of our students and staff. And thanks to his leadership, our district, Los Al, was unified, really was one of the first districts in the entire state that provided in-person learning opportunities for students. And that was really due to very strong and courageous leadership from this board and allowed our students to reconnect, learn, and thrive during a time of uncertainty. Scott, your dedication and service has made a lasting impact on our district. While your time on the board may be coming to an end, the contributions you've made will resonate in the lives of students and families for many years to come. And so on behalf of the Board of Education, district staff, and our entire Los Al Unified community, we want to thank you for your service, leadership, and commitment to our students and to our families. Congratulations. And we will let him speak, but we really want Scott to be able to have the last word. And we are so fortunate to have many city partners and our local elected officials who have come today or present, have certificates or proclamations to give to Scott. And so if you are an elected official who would like to come and present, we'll call you up at this time. Otherwise, we have some others. So Tony, Shelley, Tanya, any others? Shelley, you want to start?
There we go. Okay. I met Scott when our trustee area started, and we were wondering what was going to happen. And Scott stepped up and he, I'm sure he didn't know what a challenging time it was going to be, but we appreciate it so much, and I've gotten to know him a little bit. And I just really, I just really appreciate you and all you've done for us, and wish you the best in whatever project. I'm sure there'll be another project, but whatever project. So this is from the city of Seal Beach. And thank you for representing us, and thank you, all you've done for our kids.
Oh, thank you. She is also retiring. I want to thank her for eight years of service to our city and all of us in College Park. So thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you.
Tony DiMarco from the Rossmore Community Services District. Scott, thank you very much. You know, this is what makes our school district and our communities at large so special is people like Scott just stepping up and, like Dr. Pulver said, volunteering their time. And you've done a remarkable job on behalf of the RCSD and the community of Rossmore. We say thank you.
Thank you.
I deserve that laugh.
I'm not volunteering for anything.
And that's why I had to be here. I have a mayor, it ain't me. I was like, hey dude, I know him personally. So I'm gonna tell y'all a story. We were on PTA council, right? So anybody that ever wants to volunteer, anybody watching, if you think PTA local level is too much, go to the council level, way easier, especially membership seat. Anyways, we were sitting in a meeting, and they were asking for something, and Meg, it might have been you that was asking for a volunteer. I might be making this up, but the story holds. Asking for a volunteer for something, and I just looked at Scott, and he tried to look away, but apparently I'm mesmerizing. So he looked back, I was like, hey man, that's you. He was like, yes, that's going to be me. And you know, as an elected, right, you need people that can just come and work. We can't all come in and take up the air in the room. Some of us, some people, have to be ready to just get that shovel and do the work. And Scott, you're that guy. I pray that whoever comes behind you understands that concept because that's what will keep the cohesion going. We can't all come in and, you know, do the dances and do the speeches and, "Look at me, look at me." You literally need people that will come in and that will do the work and don't need to take credit for it. Don't need anybody to even know their name that they did it. And Scott, I'm saying your name because it is you, but that's you. You embody that, and I honor you for that. And I'm glad that I made you snort. I don't know if y'all heard it, but I did. I am so proud to know you. I am honored to honor you this evening. Thank you. They say four years is short. I'm on the same timeline. No, it's not. Pandemic four years is not the same as a regular four years. So sir, thank you. And I know that whatever you put your energy into next will be as much of a blessing as this has been.
Any other?
Well, I was just gonna have-
I have a couple from, yes, we are. Yep. So we also have from the California State Assembly, Assemblyman Trey Toz's office has a certificate of recognition to honor Scott Faiet for his years of service as a board member, and from Assemblymember Diane Dixon, both representatives within our district, who also gives a certificate of recognition to Scott. So congratulations, Scott, to there. And on behalf of the Board of Education, district and staff, just a simple gift that we have for you, Scott. You can open it later, but it really will just, it is our way to say thank you and to commemorate the great deal of work that you've done on behalf of all students and staff in this community. Thank you very much. And now you get to have the last word.
I appreciate all those kind words. The check is in the mail, thank you. I just want to say, listening to all the accomplishments, I don't, I was a very, very small and late part. All of the great accomplishments that the district has had was because I stood on the shoulders of giants. And some of those are standing right here, and are sitting up there, and over there. And of course, the district wouldn't run without Tina. And all the people at home. The district is full of such wonderful, kind, caring people. It humbles me, and it makes me just want to be a better person, not only from the example of my fellow board members, but also from the people in our community. In the beginning of my term, there was several hundred people yelling and screaming at us. But you have to remember, for everyone that was screaming and that was unhappy, there was 100 that were happy and that would see you at the choir shows and the elementary second-grade sing-alongs. And they would come up and say, "Thank you, thank you." And that's what I think we need to remember, is our community is amazing. We have such wonderful people, and you don't have to look much farther than Leif is one of the best examples. How much they donate, how much they give. So these accolades, thank you. I will take the undeserved credit, but alls I did was get to sit in the comfy chair. It's all the people sitting out here in the cheap seats that do the real work. Now, I've gone on too long. The first thing I should have done was to thank my incredible wife, Emily. All those things I go to, about half of them she wished I would stay home. The other half, she says, "Get out of here." But without her, I am not the person that these people have all spoken so glowingly about. It's a wonderful, wonderful life when you have a partner. It makes everything easier. It makes you want to be a better person. It makes you a better person. So thank you, Emily, for everything you have done for me and allow me to be. Oh, no, now I gotta say all the bad things about the kids sitting next to her.
Absolutely.
Seventeen-year-old boys are tough.
He looks delightful.
I can't even get a pass on that, could I? No. Joseph is wonderful, my kids are fantastic. I am so fortunate and lucky. But I'll tell you, the smart ones are hard, man, they keep you on your toes.
Thank you, Scott. And we are going to move on to the next recognition, but our board president can't do this recognition because it is about our board president. So I am going to ask our vice president, Marla Davidson, to come up and lead this portion of the next portion of the meeting. Oh, no, you're gonna stay right here.
I have to get my speech.
Oh, she has a speech, go ahead.
I can get ready because on the phone yesterday, my May and I were both trying to figure out how we're not going to price this. I think we're grandkids, you said, told her what we have to do. And stand with your legs apart, put our hands on our hips, and give a super girl look.
So we want to welcome and thank all of you who have come here tonight to celebrate two incredible school board members. It is truly an honor for me to speak on behalf of this board this evening, as we pay tribute to a most extraordinary individual. I've never been inclined to put much stock in the word legacy, believing that each of us gets, has a responsibility to get up every morning, ready to give our best to what we value, knowing that whatever good we accomplish will lay a foundation for those who come after us. However, May Cattulli absolutely has an undeniable legacy, built with the wisdom, dedication, determination, and heart of a hero. What does it mean to be, what does it mean to our community that May chose to serve six terms, 24 years on the school board? The answer is pretty gigantic. Prior to deciding to run for the board, as a mom, May gave years of service to our district, serving in numerous leadership positions on PTA, school site councils, and district committees, just to name a few. Thus, May approached her first term on the board in the year 2000 with an informed understanding of educational needs and community goals. 24 years later, her service to the public education is beyond compare. As a board member, May has never put boundaries on her commitment to providing the best possible education for every student. May's involvement over the years has extended far, far beyond Los Al's boundaries. On a state level, May has served as the Orange County Representative on the Board of Directors for CSBA, California School Board Association. At annual CSB conferences, CSBA conferences with school boards from all over the state, May has served on panels, sharing valuable knowledge with audiences of school board members from everywhere. May is known and respected by all who have served with her, and that number is big. We could be in a crowd of hundreds at a state conference, and May will know half of them, literally, half of them. I do not know how many times a board member from another district has asked me if I realize how fortunate I am to work with May. I often respond, "May, you teach me something new every day." May teaches all of us. Recently, at the annual state conference, May spoke, providing guidance for school boards on how to work with all stakeholders on challenging issues. Over the years, as a member of CSBA's Legislative Committee, May has read and analyzed hundreds of pages of education bills, seeking to support legislative pieces that would be the most impactful for our district and for public education throughout the state. May met with legislators to advocate for our schools with the welfare of our children centered in her heart. Because of her wise perspectives, as her wise perspectives became known and respected in Sacramento, May recently was invited to testify before the State Assembly Education Committee. We're proud. As she advocated for our district, in reality, May was advocating for every child and every public school in the state of California. Respect for May transcends our district boundaries. May, you touch lives wherever you go. On a county level, May has not simply served on boards, she has led them, pointing their agendas always in the direction of doing what is best for our children and our schools. As president of the Orange County School Board Association, not to be confused with the Orange County Board of Education. Please do not make that mistake. May encouraged fellow members to share ideas, address common concerns, and problem solve through collaborative innovation. With 20 years of membership on the Orange County ROP Board, which is a consortium of five districts, May worked collaboratively with leaders to advance opportunities for students who may look for specific technical training that would lead to valuable career opportunities. She opened doors. Serving on the board more than once as its president, May worked with others to expand offerings to include such training as with drones, fire science, biotechnology, cybersecurity, and much more. Although May's dedication and hard work have left a positive trail of achievements for education across the county and state, if you ask her, and I did, what has meant the most to her, it is her work in Los Al. Never believing that good is accomplished by one person, May believes in the "we" that drives innovation and change. That "we" consists of our community, its organizations, families, school board, administration staff, and most importantly, our children. For May, they are the inspiration that drives every decision. Over the past 24 years, that "we," with May actively engaged in every facet, has weathered difficult times like the 2008 recession, COVID, and political turmoil, to provide strong support for our employees, create powerful instructional training and resources for our educators, promote programs to support learning loss due to COVID, revamp classrooms with the latest technological tools, open well-spaced centers staffed with mental health counselors on every campus, very dear to our hearts, construct new playgrounds, build a three-story STEM building, Olympic aquatic center, and a soon-to-be-open three-court gym. Those are just some of the tangible outcomes. Beyond that, May, you are a leader by example who uplifts all of us. As former superintendent, Sherry Croft, and Sherry is here tonight, so thank you for being here, Sherry. here, Sherry. As former superintendent Sherry Cropp expressed, "You are amazing, Meg. You're a fair leader who always puts kids first." In sharing how she loved working with you, Meg, Dr. Cropp added, "She's literally always professional, pleasant, and a joy to be around." All that and more makes you the very integral part of our "we," as a person everyone looks to for your visionary leadership, collaborative spirit, wise perspectives, and your compassionate soul. In closing, Meg, I cannot imagine how you must be feeling at this moment. Please know that our hearts are full of love for you and gratitude for your decades of long dedication to our community. I only know a board with you on it, same for all of them. I cannot imagine your empty seat. To let you know that we have no intention of allowing you to forget us as you and Lynn explore the world, enjoy your grandkids, and walk your 15,000 steps on that beautiful beach, we have a special token symbolizing how much we want to keep you here. This is, it's not real gold. It's spray. This is the golden key to our hearts and to our district. And we have a little certificate that says, "Heart of Gold Key to the District, Presented to Meg Kattulie for serving Los Alamos Unified School District with wisdom, dedication, and kindness as a deeply valued member of the Los Alamos Board of Education for 24 magical years, awarded on behalf of our Board of Education, Administration, and every single individual whose life has been touched by your outstanding leadership since the year It's the key to the district, and you need to know there are always seats for you and Lynn, hey, and anybody else. I want those babies, at every event. Now, none of this would have been possible for Meg to do if she had not had the love and support of her incredible family. Lynn, we know that you have juggled the calendar countless times over the years as you and Meg manage not only your busy lives, but the schedules of three very active and engaged kids. Meg, would you like to introduce your beautiful family to us?
I can.
Okay.
I guess I will start at this end. Here's my.
Here.
Can't hear me? I thought I had a teacher voice.
Okay, I will start on this end. I have my wonderful son-in-law, Tony Panzika. I'm also throwing in that he is a coach at the high school, so I like recruit people from everywhere. Next to him is my grandson Ben, and next to Ben is my grandson Charlie. They are sophomores at the high school. And then that's Lynn, who's my long-suffering husband. It's the only way to put it. When I originally ran for the board, I think he thought it would be four years, and boy, was he wrong. But I appreciate all the support he's always given me, and I'm trying not to cry. And then we have Jessica, who belongs to the Panzika Boys, with my husband in between. And then I have my wonderful son, Todd, and his delightful wife, Dawn. And next to her is my very precious granddaughter, Brixton, who will be going to, no plug, TK next year, hopefully at McGaw. And then next to Brixton is Milo, who is a little, not quite three and a half, so he has like another year to wait before TK. And there's my beautiful daughter, Lisa, her handsome and wonderful husband, Mike, and we cannot forget Hazel because she won't let us. And who wants to? Those cheeks are so kissable. So all I can say is that I am incredibly proud of my family. They're beautiful. I mean, they're fantastic. They're here, and I'm gonna cry. And I also want to say to Lauren. I've known Lauren since she was seven, and she is a part of our family. So now I'm gonna stop and stop crying.
So just in closing, Meg, you shared that your highest aspiration is to leave this world a better place. Every person who knows you, every one of us who's grown through your example, every child whose life is enriched by what you have done for them, can affirm without a shadow of doubt that you have made and will continue to make this world a better place. We're all honored to know you. And I think Mr. Forehand has a presentation.
Yes. This is real silver. You get the medal, you put out with this, 24. Okay, on behalf of the board, thank you.
And I know that the other board members would like to have something to say. Mrs. Hill?
Thank you. Three tissues in. So, Meg, I got the honor of being able to talk a little bit about you at the reception earlier, but I would just like to say that you are an amazing role model, an amazing leader, and really taught me from the very beginning that we need to listen to everybody, but it's the big picture that we constantly need to keep in mind. And that you always put our students first and kept the main thing the main thing. And I will always appreciate and love you for that. And I hope that you have many amazing adventures. And I know that with all of these children, I can't believe these are the twins. I really can't, because they were like two, I think, when I first met you. So I know that we will be seeing you at many, if nothing else, many volleyball games. You are adored and an amazing leader, and you leave a very inspiring legacy here. Thank you, Meg.
Mr. Fayet?
I just want to say, Meg is incredible. I don't know how she did this for 24 years, but I do know that when I was coming on the board, she was instrumental in having conversations with me and would pull me aside, as the other board members would too. But Meg would always give me counsel and advice because despite how easy she makes it look, it's sometimes hard up here. So I just want to thank you for the incredible legacy that you left and ditto from all the other comments that everyone else had.
Mr. Forehand?
You stole my line. Ditto, ditto. And I will always cherish Meg because when I first came on the board four years ago, she took the time to, we met in the board conference room. And from that day forward, this is a lady that I'm gonna listen to, and I still do. So thank you, Meg, for your friendship and what you've done for this community and our school district.
Dr. Pulver?
Well, I won't be as brief as ditto, but you know, I definitely really wanted to write some words down to really just give the respect and the honor that Meg you deserve after 24 years. But I do want to tell you, make sure you don't lose that key. That's kind of like the CIF card. You must have it with you in order to get into the dance shows for free, in order to get into any of the sporting events, et cetera.
Does it open up the electronic locks?
It might open the electronic lights. You should find out.
Okay.
But it's one of a kind, and a locksmith won't be able to replace it if you lose it.
I don't think I'll lose it.
It's the first key to the district that we've been able to give. And so I think there's no one more deserving of that. Thank you. You know, as superintendent, I've had the extreme pleasure of being able to work with Meg in this role for six years. But as you heard earlier, Dr. Sherry Cropp, who's also here this evening, had eight years to be able to really serve as superintendent with Meg. And so I just want to thank you, and I know it's so lovely to see Dr. Cropp here as well to really honor and recognize the amazing legacy of Ms. Kattulie. And so, as you've heard earlier, throughout her tenure, Meg has been a steadfast advocate for students, families, and staff. And I think what I love about her, and I think we've heard this from many individuals, is that your decision-making has always placed students at the center in ensuring their academic success, their well-being, and really the future opportunities to remain the district's top priorities. And that's even that big-picture vision that you heard Diana talking about. And you heard Marlaus really talking about Meg not only being an influential leader here at the local level, but really a passionate supporter of public education statewide and quite honestly nationally. Her contributions include serving as the past president of the Orange County School Boards Association, which is really a collaboration of all school boards within Orange County and their directors. She shared her expertise, has been a presenter at the annual school board's education conference, has represented our district and many others in various education assembly committees. But she's always championing initiatives that elevate education and ensure equitable access for all students. Her leadership has been instrumental in shaping the legacy of our district, and you really have been in terms of this word, legacy. Over the past 24 years under her stewardship, Los Alamos Unified has achieved countless milestones, from national and state academic recognitions to transformative facility improvements like the three-story STEM building, the aquatic center, the ongoing construction with our new gymnasium. But her work has also fostered student wellness, and so has this entire board, through creating well spaces at every site, prioritizing safety and comprehensive safety measures. And I think back to years ago, even like doing security fencing at our campuses, that was novel. Most districts and schools weren't doing that, and there are still some who haven't. So prioritizing safety with comprehensive security measures. And Meg has always really viewed part of her major role as a school board member as the fiduciary responsibility of the district. And strengthening our fiscal responsibility, she has saved taxpayers millions of dollars through bond refinancing and making sure that we really use our district resources thoughtfully, particularly as I've shared with many of you in the past, that we're one of the lowest-funded school districts in Orange County, and yet our results are among the top. And that really is thoughtful stewardship from our board and really the leadership that Meg you've left. Meg, your commitment extends beyond the boardroom. You've been a collaborative partner with community groups like the Silbeach City District Working Group. In the past, we've had city working groups with the Rossmore Community Services District. And of course, her service and really her passion with career technical education by serving on the North Orange County ROP Board really helps bridge connections that benefits our students and our families. Meg, your passion, dedication, and unwavering belief in the power of education has inspired all of us. Your presence on this board will greatly be missed, and your legacy will continue to guide us. And so just on behalf of the Board of Education, district staff, and the entire community, we want to thank you for 24 dedicated, genuine, and authentic service to this community. Your advocacy, your leadership, you leave a legacy that will inspire generations of students to come. We're so grateful for you. Thank you, Meg. I didn't think I was gonna cry.
I knew I was going to.
And before she has the last word, we too, we're so thankful, and it's great to see once again our local elected officials, if they want to come up and present. Thank you, Tony. It looks like you're gonna be serving RCSD another four years. We're very proud of that. Shelly Stastarsik, who is also leaving Silbeach City Council after many years, her term limits are up. And then thank you, Tanya Dobie, as well. So we're gonna call, Shelly Stastarsik, do you want to? We'll just do the same order.
Do the same order? Okay. Let me get out. I have known Meg so long that she wasn't even on the school board yet. So it's been a long haul. I remember her as a busy mom, a school helper, PTA president.
You were a PTA president at the high school.
I was a PTA president.
I think I talked her into it.
I think you did. And then she got on the school board and, you know, the taking care of kids, the leadership. She was, I just think of her more kind of as a rock because she was always, well, of course, it was Meg that was off doing this battle or doing this service. And I mean, it's just, it's just been amazing. And thank you so much for all your years. I know kids are always, always the reason. And I just appreciate so much all of your dedication, and I can't, you know, can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Shelly. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I better offload something.
Well, you don't have to hold that key, too. Or do you want to hold it?
I'm afraid I'll drop it on my foot.
So Meg, on behalf of Rossmore, on behalf of my board, want to thank you for all the years that you've served. But personally, you know, the first two terms, you know, we thank you, but the next four, okay, that you decided is what makes our school board so, our school district so amazing. And, you know, Dr. Pulver, I love your speeches because there's so many talking points, the lowest-funded. But, you know, I think to myself and where my businesses are, and I go, you know, I have businesses in LA and Orange County, and it's like, why can't other school districts just reproduce Los Alamos School District? Why isn't that, you know, why is it, you know, you have problems? It's just amazing. And personally, on behalf of all three of my children who started school here, you were already elected a leader here. They are all doing wonderfully because of this, the amazing school district we have and the people just like you. And just like Scott said, the people after you are going to, you're gonna elevate them to be even better because of all of your knowledge that you brought to the school district and to this board. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, another person I know.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, so, you know, everybody talked about all the other stuff, right? I want to talk about, because I don't think people understand the word "legacy." Some words get thrown around, right? Legacy. Do you know what it means, though? That means when you walk out of these doors, what you've done remains. Be proud of that, no matter who gets the seat.
Poor man.
I'm not gonna leave the seat empty, sir, okay? They've given the seat to you. You've earned it. God bless you as you go. But you have already put steps in place. You have built things. People are like, "Why'd she stick around so long?" I know what it's like to be trying to build something and to be very mindful about whose hands you place it into. So I thank you for sticking around to a point where it was so perfectly packaged that you can pass it off to others, and they can continue to build. That is beautiful. That is honorable. And I thank you that now that you've blessed us, you can go and take care of your babies.
Yes.
I hope you enjoy your next version of greatness, my dear.
Thank you, Todd.
And once again, from Assemblymember Tretaz, 70th District, from the California Assembly, we have a recognition for Meg, as well as from Assemblymember Diane Dixon, 72nd Assembly District. And then, not to be outdone, Meg, on behalf of our entire board, this community, we too have just a little something you can open up later, to really just thank you and commemorate the years of service that you have provided. This is just a small token of the work, of our appreciation for the work that you have done. And so we want to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
There's not to be a picture when my hair is blonde.
It's not a picture when your hair is blonde. Nope, not at all. You don't need to worry about that. And then normally, our December meeting is when we have our organizational meeting where we transfer our board president, outgoing board president, a new board president is elected. And we normally, as a district, get a present and a gift to our board president. And so you won't be at that December meeting, and so why is there two gifts?
And so you won't be at that December meeting, and so why is there two gifts? Because you have served. I think we found out this morning, this afternoon, that this is your fifth term as board president. So this is just a token of our appreciation for the last year that you've served as our Board of Education president. So Madam President, we bestow this gift to you as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And truly, Meg gets the last word.
Okay. Okay, this is gonna be hard. I have to start by thanking my husband. Oh, God, do not record this. Okay, that made it easy. Thank you, honey. I appreciate that. Like I said...
It's on YouTube. Don't record it, though.
Oh, yeah, but yeah, but that's okay. I don't go on YouTube very often. Anyway, I have, really have to thank my husband, I can't look at him, because he really supported me the first time I ran for school board. He walked the district with me a couple of times, and he was really happy when I ran for reelection. And I don't know how happy he was the other four times after that. But I know he's happy that I have decided to retire because we are at the stage in our life where we have so many fun people in our life that we need to spend time with them, and we just need to cram as much good times in as that we can. I also want to thank all of my family, and I hope that you never had any, I know it's not true, fallout from having a mom who is in the position that I was and the things you might have heard, because I know that you guys did, and I just really appreciate how well you handled that situation. I have to thank the entire community because they elected me and reelected me. So that was really wonderful. I also want to thank all the superintendents that I was lucky enough to work with, Carol Hart, Greg Franklin, Sherry Crop, and Andrew Pulver. You guys all brought your visions and goals for Los Alamos with you to this place, and you helped shape what it is today. I need to thank all of the board members that I've worked with, because an individual board member is only 20% of any decision, whether that decision is good, bad, or indifferent. And I truly appreciate every person's input into our decisions. And I have to give a very special thank you to this board, the integrity and level of trust that was created during one of the most challenging times in education, COVID. And I can't thank you guys so much for the work that you put in and the feeling that we have as a team and how well we work together. 24 is a long years, is a long time, and I want to talk about some highlights. I was first elected in the year 2000, and if you can remember back that far, Gray Davis was the governor, and he had just increased state funding for schools by 10%. Now, that was a fun time. We were able to give raises, we were able to purchase some supplies, and then we got to plan on how to spend some money, so it was just great. It was also my introduction to the whimsy of state funding. It changes every year. The funding goes up, and then it goes down. We get one-time money to use on a special program, and then what do we do when that money runs out? And the program is so great, and it's just wonderful for our kids. How do we get that program and carve out more money out of the general fund to keep it going? I promise I'm not gonna do a mini lesson in state financing, but this was a good introduction to how it works. And then after that, we had the recession of 2008. We needed to make horrible cuts. The board's goal at that time was to make the least bad decision that we could. No one signed up for a job like that. I felt like I was dismantling public education. Everyone was unhappy. Parents were unhappy, students were unhappy, staff was unhappy. Everyone's job was harder, employees took furlough days without pay, but we kept educating our kids. The recovery was slow, and the impact of the recession was felt for a really long time. But now, onto better news. I want to thank our community for supporting our facilities' need in this district. We passed two facility bonds while I was on the board, and I'm so proud of the improvements to our school. All of our schools have been modernized. We've had infrastructure replaced, wireless connections, new playgrounds in all of our elementary schools, solar panels. Both middle schools have been fully updated. And our high school, where all of our kids end up, is a thing of beauty. Classroom reservations, infrastructure, but let's talk about that STEM building. That is the thing of beauty. Besides being the state-of-the-art of a classroom, we were able to remove old portables and open up the campus. A much-needed second gym is under construction, and I am looking forward to seeing my grandsons play in it. And that's to the fiscal oversight from our staff. We were able to get matching money from the state to match the bond money that we already have. Now onto everyone's favorite time in their lives, COVID. While the CDC and the pharmaceutical companies were working, trying to figure out a way to get out of COVID, Los Alamos was performing the true miracles. In two weeks, we were offering online instruction. Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Online instructions to our students, and this was due to tremendous work from our educational service department, our tech department, and our teachers. Everyone was working to educate our kids. The tech department became a necessarily, necessary daily supporter of education, and they kept refining on how to get hotspots and devices into our kids' hands. Teachers took craft courses in technology education, and we were all hoping for the return to a regular school year. We were the first district to have in-person education in our elementary schools, and we were the first district in the county to have in-person education. But we also developed a hybrid form, so you had the option, if you wanted to take your year online, due to many reasons, you could opt to do that. You could go on to the online Los Alamos for the parents and the students that preferred that. It wasn't perfect, but it was way better than it was for most of the students across the county. We had to follow the state guidelines, and I don't think anyone was happy about that. We are a state agency, we have no choice. We have to follow them. We had many complaints about masks and immunizations that we could not do anything about. It was frustrating for everyone. But one good thing that came out of COVID was our focus on mental health. Life can be tough, life is stressful, and life can be overwhelming. We know that students can't learn if they're hungry or exhausted. If they are really worried about things, sometimes things out of their control, they can't learn. We all need to learn to be kinder to one another and to help support others. But students now have places at every school site, so they can go in there and meet with people that they trust and talk to them. This is a huge thank you to Leif, who was a major supporter in getting our well spaces on every site. I have had leadership opportunities that I never imagined I would have. I am grateful for them, and I hope that those experiences strengthen my work in Los Alamos. It definitely strengthened my belief that Los Alamos D should be clumped and spread out through the entire state. I think a strong commitment that we have to our youth is the difference. Our entire community supports education and children. I have said that Los Alamos is an educational Camelot, and I really do believe that. It is a very special place. I know that Los Alamos will still strive to get better for our students, and as my T-shirts say, we will support the four As: academics, athletics, arts, and activities. We will ignite unlimited possibilities because we are one team with one vision. We are Los Alamos strong, and we are better together, and we will be forward-focused to extend what is possible. I thank everyone for this opportunity, and yes, I really have T-shirts that say all those things. Thank you so much. I really hate being the center of attention. I really do. I'm very uncomfortable. I don't think anyone cares.
She wanted me to recess before you guys applauded, but no, we will now take a brief recess for families to be able to take pictures with Scott and with Meg and to thank all of our elected officials for coming to honor them as well. So thank you. We'll take a brief recess, and then we'll carry on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's over.
You did it.
I did it. I needed it.[1163.83]
I'd like to welcome everyone back from our recess. It is now time for public comments, and I do have a card. The Board welcomes input from the public. This is the opportunity for community members to provide public comment to the Board on agenda items or items not listed on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the Board should complete a speaker card prior to the start of each Board meeting. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of three minutes, and public comment is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Comment cards can be submitted to the District Office at any time after 9:00 a.m. on the day of a Board meeting and will also be accepted at the start of the Board meeting at 6:00 p.m. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another. When addressing the Board, speakers are requested to address the Board from the podium, state their name, and adhere to time limits. The Boyd, the Boyd. The Board may not take any action or discuss any item not appearing on the posted agenda and cannot immediately respond to public comments. Speakers are cautioned that under the California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because those comments are made in a public meeting. With that being said, I would like to call Matt Bragman to the podium, please.
Board members, Superintendent Pulver and Executive Cabinet, I am Matt Bragman. I am Board-elect, Board Member-elect from Trustee Area 5. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I just think it's very important to stand here and really recognize the great work that Scott and Meg have done during their terms. I could not be more thankful and proud to be an incoming Board Member. We heard a lot earlier about legacy, and legacy is something that I truly believe in. You have set a foundation, whether it's in four years or 24 years, that I hold dear to my heart. I will take that great responsibility with everything that I carry and hold. I know that your husband stepped out, but I know as someone that had family support in the idea of running for this seat, I know how important and valuable that is. You've set a model for that. I'm glad he's walking back in, because I know that when I first talked about running, one of the things I heard was, well, my husband might divorce me if I run again. And I appreciate that that consideration was there and that you are stepping away with grace and teaching and mentoring and meeting with me to make sure that I could be the best Board Member that I possibly could be in your name, in your honor. I know that we talked a bit ago about maybe a plaque on a building, and I think, you know, they could rename this district after you, after the legacy you have set. So I am excited to be up in a seat there, not filling your seat, but to be in a seat up there soon, to carry on the legacy, to work with the Board Members, to work with the Executive Cabinet. And I can't wait for December, and at the same time, I can't wait to continue to work with you. I hope that you're not answering the phone when you're off on some beach, or jumping off a cliff, or doing something crazy and fun. But I just truly can't thank Scott, Meg enough for the work you all have done, for our district, for our kids. I tried to run a campaign that was all about students, and I think you inspired me to do that, and will always keep that front and center for myself in my work going forward. So I thank you. I can't wait to celebrate you more in December when I'm sitting up there. But thank you all, and I hope you have a good evening. I can't wait to see the rest of this Board meeting and to cheer you on as you end it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now go on to the information and presentations part.
Sorry, Madam President, we actually skipped one item that I wanted to bring back.
Oh, Board Member Communication.
Board Member Communication, six.
See, it's my last Board meeting, and I still don't have it right, after 24 years. Okay, Board Communication. Mr. Fayet, do you have anything to say?
I just want to thank people for all the kind words that were said, and I want to thank everyone in this district. And I just want to let you know that I still will be around, because half of my wardrobe consists of T-shirts with different schools on them. So, thank you to everyone and everything.
Mrs. Davidson?
So, I'm completely exhausted and out of words, which is unusual for me. I will just quickly say, first of all, congratulations and thank you to Lisa Haygood, our Teacher of the Year. She's phenomenal. I first mentored when I was teaching at Rossmore School in the very early 90s, and she was just this young thing, working as an aide, looking forward to being a teacher, and she is phenomenal. She's a phenomenal leader. And thank Rossmore and McCullough for two incredible walkthroughs, where I saw teachers in action, everybody on campus doing exactly what they can do to serve and love and care about kids. It's a joyous place to be, and I'm not the only one joyful. The kids are joyful as they learn. So I thank the staff and everybody at Rossmore McCullough for showing us just what a quality, loving, compassionate, caring education looks like. And then quickly, at Weaver, they had the Brain Awards, and these were 5th graders that were given awards. I think they were coming back from middle school. They were 5th graders last year who throughout their time at Weaver had been buddies to other students who have challenges. And it was just one of the most beautiful moments to see these kids being rewarded for caring about somebody else, and also knowing that the experiences that they had probably changed their perspectives and their hearts for life. So, thank you, Dr. Schmidt, and everyone who runs those programs. I know it's Vicky Vu that is in charge of them, so thank you, Vicky. Joseph was exactly right. The football game, I think best of all, Mrs. Hill said it perfectly. It's one thing that never changes in high school, that school spirit, the fun in the stadium, and everybody cheering and having a great time. So, thank you, Joseph, he's gone, but thank you, Joseph, for explaining all of that and sharing it. And I want to say how these two, it's heartbreaking for them to go, but I know that they're going to be here with us and doing things, and we will see them. But I do want to welcome our new, our future Board Members. Fernaz isn't here right now, but I've gotten to know both of them over the course of the campaign. She's a phenomenal woman with a child at every level, who has served this community for a number of years, and will give her heart and soul and her expertise. She's got a real passion for learning and raising the bar even higher. And Matt, thank you for your words. I think you will fill a seat on this Board with dignity, integrity, and brilliance. I heard you answer very difficult questions during this race, questions that could have thrown any other person for a loop. You gave an answer that was not just satisfactory, it was based on evidence and knowledge and wisdom that you bring from your experiences and was vote-winning. I saw people change their minds in front of me. So, thank you. You're going to be wonderful. We look forward to having you with us. And that's it.
Thank you. And Mr. Forehand?
Yes. I was back on Broadway this, and I didn't even leave Los Alamitos, from the Lightning Thief drama at the high school, to A Wrinkle in Time at McCullough, to Terra Volta, the L.A. High School Dance, the Believer Choir Show at McCullough, and Mamma Mia at Oak. You can't go anywhere, anywhere else and see such quality productions. And it was no doubt, having watched all these, that we have 21 students moving forward in the PTA Reflections Contest, sharing visual arts, dance, music, composition, and good luck to them. None of this would be possible without life, the $150,000 that they have distributed to our schools, and some of the projects seem so exciting. Welcome, Matt, and welcome, Fernaz. You're going to be awesome, and we look forward to you. And then lastly, I wanted to share something about giving back. It's very interesting and very positive to see kids giving back to other kids. The Kindness Club reaching out at the high school to the life skills kids. You mentioned the Brain Program, 5th graders working with autistic children. L.A. High School mom, the Model United Nations Club formed a mini-club at Oak, and they came together on a Saturday. And just to see them training the little one, not little, the Oak Kids for future involvement in this wonderful organization. And then our ASB reaching back to Oak and McCullough and bringing them forward to say, this is what leadership looks like at the high school. And then our Career Center last week, reaching out to the kids that may not choose to go to college. They may want to do a trade of some sort, and seeing representatives of those trades there was great. Lastly, though, I want to shout out to our nurses and our LVNs. I don't think we've ever celebrated their work. I don't know that for a fact. But I was at Weaver one day, and one of the district nurses came up to me and said, do you kind of know what I do? And I said, well, I think you fix kids, you know? But she said, no, we do more than that. And she told me about a 3rd grader who had enrolled, and he, they do vision screening at K, 2, and 5. So he enrolled, new to the district, a 3rd grader. And they noticed right away, she screened him, and I thought, well, how great did that go? Because she then has prevented waiting till 5th grade to have him screened to get the help he needs. So all this reaching out to our kids, there's nothing better, and it is Camelot.
It is Camelot.
We live in Camelot, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Hill?
I was with you, Mr. Forehand, when that nurse came up, and I just have to say, thank you for mentioning that and remembering that. But I also just saw her passion for what she did and how she knew that she made a difference in this child's life. It was really impactful. And so, just quickly, a couple of things, as I said at the beginning of our year, I really am trying to tie the things I do back to our goals and to our values, to really show that that is what we focus on the most. And I had the opportunity, and I know that we had at the last meeting, we had the student who had brought the Anne Frank exhibit to our meeting, but I had a chance to go afterwards. And I just was amazed at what a great presentation it was. I got to actually see her, she was my docent, but there were a couple of other groups that were coming in, and just how they were engaging, the students and the groups that were going through there, and not just talking, but asking questions and getting them to respond back. But I really see that as also fostering collaboration, our goal number three, fostering collaboration and relationships and partnerships. Because she brought that exhibit in from another partnership, and it was such a little joy for me. About a week later, I had the opportunity to actually go to the Anne Frank House in Amsterdam, so it was a nice little precursor. And then also, I had the opportunity to go to the first league football game we had, which was also our St. Jude's game, and Dr. Pulver was talking about that a little bit earlier. And to see so many of our students from TK, they had to be from TK, so one had to be held through the whole little cheer routine. She wouldn't leave her little companion, all the way to our middle school students who also actually performed on the, as the halftime show. And so just on that collaboration, as well as making sure that we are really matriculating our students up, and just starting them from the very beginning, if it's cheer, or if it's music, or if it's band, whatever that may look like, moving them up. And I just really appreciate the district for that and all the work that goes into that. We also, at that halftime, they honored a former Griffin football player who lost his life to cancer at the age of 26, and I had mentioned him before. And I just was so him before. And I just was so touched by that. And to me, that really connects with our core value of honor, and how we honor not only those that are still here, but those that have come through our district, and maybe even those that we've lost. So, and I too want to welcome Matt and Fernaz, and I look forward to the opportunity to work with them and to continue the amazing work that you've done for 24 years and you Scott for four years. So, we will, we'll keep the lights on, I promise.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Hill. I don't really want to give a report, because I think everybody's heard way too many things about me, and we should be done. But I just need to say that I'm so appreciative of the kind comments that everyone on the board and other people have made to me. And I feel like it's not 100% deserving, because everything pretty much that has ever been accomplished is accomplished with teamwork. So, I always feel like saying, no, I didn't do the 100% graduation rate. A lot of other people really worked hard on it. But I do want to acknowledge and thank the people for their thoughtfulness and their sincerity. And I really want to thank everyone for allowing me to have this opportunity and to have it for such a long time, so I could see so many positive changes going on. And it's just, it's really great. And I do know that our board is in good hands and will be in good hands in December when it gets started. And so, I am able to leave with a conscious knowing that we are in a good spot. I do think we are Camelot, and we will keep that belief and that hope, and we will go forward, and our children will thrive, and our entire staff will thrive. And once again, Los Alamos will be the place to be. So, thank you, everyone.
Okay. Now, we can go to our presentations, and I feel so sorry for our auditor. Anyway, Dr. Pulver, would you like to do the introductions?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. So, as you know, as a public school district, our business office and our fiscal services team does a phenomenal job managing our budget and staying within the numerous codes that the state and the financing requirements. But outside of that, too, all of our financial documents and books are audited by an outside independent auditing firm of Ida Bailey. And so, they will be, I'm going to call up Alan So, who's going to be presenting just the summary of the audit report. It is 104 pages. And so, later this evening, in Item 10G, the board will consider approving it. But in the meantime, to present it, we'd like to call up Mr. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alan. I'm at Ida Bailey. I'm a senior manager that was in charge of the audit for the district. Today, I'm here to present to everyone the results of the audit of the district for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. The audit can be broken out into three separate pieces. The first piece is the financial statement audit. The second piece is the state compliance audit, and the third piece is related to federal compliance. Based on our audit of the financial statements, we look at the financial statements of the district after they close their books. Not only do we review the financial statements, we review the district's internal control processes to ensure that the transactions are recorded accurately in the financial statements. It's important to note during the audit, we do issue an opinion on the financial statements, that the financial statements are materially misstated, meaning, or materially stated, not misstated, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Based on that, we do not look at every single transaction. It's based on a risk assessment of the district. So, there are some areas that we considered are higher risk that we will look at more significantly. And based on our results of the audit, we issue an opinion on the financial statements. The district did receive an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest opinion that the district can receive for the financial statements. In addition to that, we did not find any internal control deficiencies of the district. So, the next piece of the audit is the federal compliance piece. We audit a sample of programs that the district has. These are your federal programs, such as Title I or your Estor and Gier Funds. This year, we audited the Estor and Gier Funds, and we did not find any compliance issues with the program. In addition to the federal awards, we also audit the state programs of this district. The state programs are audited based on the state audit guide that is issued by the state each year. And based on our procedures performed of each of the applicable state programs of the district, we did not find any compliance issues with the district. So, we issued an unmodified opinion for all state programs that we audited, with no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Are there any questions from the board members?
Hallelujah.
Yeah. I just want to say, thank you so much for that audit report, because that's the kind of audit report that as board members, we would like to receive. We just really appreciate your due diligence, and I know we will have it later on in the agenda for the approval. And Dr. Pulver, did you want to make another comment or anything?
No, really, I think the report, I want to thank Ida Bailey for their audit, but really, I think it goes back down to the strong fiscal practices that our fiscal, our entire fiscal team under Elvia and Myra, and all of our employees in the business office who just work tirelessly and attention to detail to ensure that we are in compliance in every level, and our internal controls are working as they should. So, we're so grateful for the exceptional work that they provide.
Yeah. It is definitely reflected in the report that we were just given. Yeah. Okay. Well, then, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now on to presentations of two textbooks and some supplemental materials. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you so much, President Cattulli. The first textbook that we're bringing forward tonight for public preview is Storylines, which will serve as the new biology curriculum at Los Alamos High School. Storylines is NGSS-aligned and will replace the current curriculum for biology. The second textbook that we're bringing forward tonight for public preview is The Myers Psychology by Bedford, Freeman, and Worth for our AP Psychology course. The College Board has recently updated its AP Psychology content, and so we are selecting a new textbook that closely aligns with the new framework for that course and that assessment. And our last material that we're bringing forward is a supplementary material, which will be on public preview as well. CK12 Biology Support Materials, which will act as a supplemental curriculum to Storylines that we're bringing forward. And all three of these texts will be on public preview for the next 30 days in Education Services.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Okay. Then we'll go on to our next item, which is our Williams Quarterly Report. Dr. Wees Wright?
Thank you, Madam President. We are happy to report that we have no Williams Uniform Complaints for this quarter.
Okay. That's another report we like to receive. Okay. We are on to our consent items. I do have a poll, so I would consider a motion for consent items are considered usual and customary in nature, and unless one is pulled out, we usually move the entire calendar. So, it would be Consent Item A, 9A through AB, AD, AJ, with Item 9...
CK.
CK, sorry. CK being pulled. I'm sure Mrs. D'Angelo got that motion. Anyway, may I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Just for clarification, the item that will be pulled is Item AC.
It is AC. Yes. I'm sorry.
It's a fat marker. It'll look like a CK.
It's a fat marker.
Yeah, no problem.
And it's late, or later. Yeah. So, okay. We've had the correction where it was Item 9AC that was pulled, and I've had a motion and a second for the approval of the rest of the calendar. And is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Then, 9AC is the approval to continue membership with SuperCoop Region 7, a California USDA Foods Cooperative for 2025-2026. May I have a motion?
Oh, second.
And does anyone want to speak to this?
So, I pulled it. I pulled it because I just think it's a wonderful example of how our Business Services finds the best way to cut corners and save money and give us still exactly what we need. There are co-ops created amongst school districts, and it's really good business, because then you're buying volume, and when you buy volume, you can often get better prices. And if I'm wrong, Dr. Pulver. And I just think that when we say that we try and be accountable for every penny, what Business Services does when they join these co-ops is exactly that, and it makes a difference in our classrooms. So, I'm just really appreciative of it.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. Any other further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. We are now on to our action items, and we have a second reading and approval of several board policies. Dr. Wees Wright, would you like to speak to them? Please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. Do you want me to go through all of them?
I think you should mention which each one is slightly...
You got it. No problem. So, the first one we have is Board Policy 5113, which is on absences and excuses. This is a final reading. It's been updated to align with California Ed Code and CSBA's recommendations. Updated verbiage includes mental health as reason for an excused absence. The update also increases the number of days to be excused for attendance at a funeral of an immediate family member, and it broadens the definition of who is considered immediate family. The next one is Board Policy 5144 on discipline, also updated in alignment with Ed Code and CSBA's recommendations. It now includes verbiage that encourages the use of restorative practices and requires other means of correction prior to suspension, and to refrain from taking away students' recess as a form of punishment. And these updates align with our current practices as a district. The next, still me, right, is the second reading and approval of Board Policies 4112 for all three of our employee groups, and that's updated with the recommendations from CSBA, as well as the second reading and approval of Board Policies 4127, 4227, and 4327, which is updated Board Policies for our temporary athletic team coaches.
Okay. Thank you. These are all second readings. We had no changes from the first time. If the board is so inclined, I would consider a motion for 10A through D.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on these policies? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. We're now on to the first reading of Revised Board Policy Uniform Complaint Procedures. Dr. Wees Wright?
Thank you. Tonight, we're bringing forward a first reading of an updated Board Policy on Uniform Complaint Procedures, which has been updated as well with CSBA's recommendations. The updates include increasing the number of days to appeal a district's decision from 15 days to 30 days, changing the verbiage from final decision to an investigation report, which references the way that we deliver the information. It removes complaints about sexual harassment as part of the UCP process, because those are now handled completely through Title IX, which is a separate process. And it clarifies that the complaints of discrimination against an employee are not handled through the UCP process.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? This is our first reading. If we have any questions or suggestions, this is one we should bring it up. Okay. I would...
I have a question.
Yes, it's okay. There's a little bit jet lag going on there. I would just recommend, Mrs. Hill, if you remember it, to go ahead and send it to Dr. Pulver, and he will share it with everyone. I just want to make a comment about our policies. We try to keep them current. Ed Code changes, laws change, and we do use California School Boards Association, who has a division within it, whose whole job is to follow changes in the law and changes in Ed Code. We would have to have a full-time person to do it, so it's much easier for us to get these recommendations. And so, we do usually do our changes according to them. So, I'm going to go ahead and ask if there is a motion for approval for first reading?
We already have a motion.
We already have a motion on the floor. All right. Then, all those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. This will come back for final approval at our next meeting. Now, we're going to have a motion to hold our annual organizational meeting on December 17th. And Dr. Pulver, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to keep saying that, because there's not too much time left that we get to say that.
I know.
So, the December meeting is always the district's organizational meeting, but that's really because the Ed Code compels governing boards of school districts and community colleges to hold their annual organizational meeting within a prescribed 15-day period. And for 2024, we have to wait for the election results to become fully certified. And that 15-day period spelled out on education code is between December 13th and December 27th. We'll be holding our organizational meeting at the December 17th, so obviously within that. And that's also where we publish our calendar for our Board of Education meetings for the 2025 year. However, we, as you all know, we approve those dates earlier, I think it was September or August, to really give the community lots of time of what those meeting dates would be. But that is what that organizational meeting will be. It'll also be where the board decides the new board president, vice president, and the different committees that each of you serve as elected officials on district committees. So, that will be at the December 17th meeting.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. Dr. Pulver. Dr. Pulver. Pulver.
Yes, Madam President.
Yeah, it is getting late. I talk too much. The approval of our district financial audit that we all like so much.
And once again, that audit presentation was brought to you, all of you, earlier in the presentation, and it's now your opportunity to consider and approve the audit as submitted.
I second.
Okay. Any comments? I just want to say, that really was an incredibly clean audit report that we got, one of the best that I remember within 24 years. So, really, thank you to Mrs. Schiner and Myra and the whole staff that worked so hard to get it done. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. We are now on to revised descriptions of jobs. Dr. Wees Wright?
Yeah, thank you. We are bringing forward a lot of revised job descriptions. So, just a little bit of background on this. With our partnership with CSBA, we've been really fortunate to have a positive working relationship, one in which during the negotiation session last year, we committed to revising all of our job descriptions for our classified employees, and then implemented new contract language that each classification series, of which there are seven, will be updated every seven years. So, we'll do one series at a time. So, it'll take seven years for there to be updates. We can always bring updates forward before the seven years. But in order to get them all current, we committed to using the 2425 school year to update all of the job descriptions. So, it began with a survey of classified membership, so that they could all give input on the job descriptions, an examination of some neighboring districts and what they have in current job descriptions. And then we formed a subcommittee. So, for this group, it's the secretarial and clerical classification series. And so, that's all of our administrative assistants, our school office coordinators, our health clerk, personnel technician, you have all the job descriptions. And so, we all came together, made some updates, brought those forward to the Personnel Commission. They were approved by Personnel Commission two weeks ago. They've also been brought forward to the CSBA chapter, and then tonight, we're recommending approval as submitted. There'll be a lot of them coming forward.
13, I counted. 13.
13, there you go.
13 of them. We are the final governing body that puts the final stamp of approval on our job descriptions. And I was just wondering if this board would have the faith in our staff and our Personnel Commission, and would like to take Items 10H through T, all 13 of them, in one motion. If any board member feels that they'd rather pull one out or do them individually, I totally respect that opinion, but I'm just offering that suggestion.
I agree.
Okay. So, we're going to do all 13 at once. Okay. I have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Other than thank you, it's a lot of work. Please tell the Personnel Commission, thank you, and the committee that does these. Yeah, it's a lot of work. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And we cut our meeting by at least 10 minutes. Now, we're on to the ratification of an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, between the Los Alamos Unified School District and the Educational Foundation, not sorry, Foundation Association, which is our teachers' association, regarding catastrophic leave. Dr. Wees, we...
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we're bringing forward a ratification for an MOU that was signed between LAEA and the district regarding catastrophic leave, which essentially opened up the catastrophic leave bank and gave LAEA members an opportunity to donate a day or more of their sick time to a catastrophic leave bank that is then used to support another LAEA member. to a catastrophic leave bank that is then used to support another LAEA member who may be experiencing a catastrophic illness for themselves personally or in their family. Those days are determined, are distributed by a committee that's made up of both management and LAEA members. And so that was signed into effect last week to meet a need that we have within our district.
All right. May I, thank you so much. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment? Mrs. Davidson?
I just want to say, thank you for doing this work, Dr. Wees Wright. As a person who, a little over 20 years ago, had the district hold my family together in a very difficult time, while you're facing a catastrophic issue, you can also lose your home. And because of the kindness and the compassion and the wherewithal of this district, that didn't happen to my husband and me. But I can't tell you what it felt like to know that we were supported and loved. And I thank every single employee who gives up sick time in order to support his or her ally, comrade, peer, fellow worker, friend, because it makes a gigantic difference in your ability to get up in the morning if you don't have to worry about that, too. So thank you so very much.
Mrs. Davidson, that was beautifully said, and I think this really shows the heart of the district. And this is, I don't know if most school districts do this or not, and I know that legally, it's way more confusing than I would just say, yeah, just donate a day, we're fine. I mean, you have to keep track of everything and all that kind of stuff. So it is obviously administrative work, but I think it so reflects the heart of our district, and I'm just really proud that this is something that our teaching staff wanted to do. So thank you for your work on this. Okay, do I have a motion?
You have a motion and a second.
Okay, good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, now we're on to our warrants. Mrs. Hill, can you remember how many pages? This... I cannot. I was going to say, yeah, she is a little bit, you know, jet-lagged here. Well, I remember them. There were 72 pages. Oh. And I was getting up and walking around every 20 pages to make sure. I was able to see all those great numbers. The warrant is basically our checkbook. We receive, all board members receive all of the warrants that have been written. And if we do have questions, we send them in and our questions are answered. So I would look for a motion to approve the warrants as presented.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And now we're on to our, once again, our incredible community, because we're here to accept the donations. Leif has made a very generous donation in teacher grants, and we have a lot of teacher grants coming through this time from Leif. We also have PTAs, Friends of Groups, that are donating quite a substantial amount of money. And it is a grand total that will come up soon. And I'll be able to say what it... Oh, 24 hula hoops. Thank you, Jerry. Seriously. It's one of these things kids have a good time with. Anyway, we received $112,693.64 in a month, and our year-to-date is $220,975.77. That is almost a quarter of a million dollars, and we started our school year in August. Thank you to our community. Thank you to our parents. Thank you to all the other organizations that have donated. Huge thank you to Leif, who works to do nothing but put back into our schools whatever they can to enhance the education for all of our kids. So may I please have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We are now have our Classified, Certified, and Administrative Personnel Report. Dr. Wees Wright?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, tonight, we're bringing forward three different personnel reports for Classified, Certified, and Administrative that reflect the changes since our last board meeting, and we recommend approval as submitted.
Mm-hmm. I'd be interested in taking all three of them together in one motion. May I have a motion like that?
Yes, I approve of all three. Second, I'll...
Okay, any discussion? All is in fact that we know that HR has been very busy. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And we are at the end of our meeting. Yay. Once again, I just want to express a personal thank you to everyone who came today. I know Scott and I are both touched by what everybody said. And it's going to be interesting in December when, we're not sitting here, but, you know, I may be at home in sweat, so that's not a bad thing. So other than that, I will just go ahead and close my final board meeting.
I think you should close the board meeting in honor of 24 years of outstanding legacy of service and four years of Scott Fayed as well.
I can close it for four years of Scott's outstanding service, but I feel silly about mine.
Well, we're going to close it, and we're going to put that in the minutes.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so for the departing board...
Vice President Davidson, maybe we should turn the meeting over to you.
We close this meeting honoring two incredibly wonderful people who have given heart and soul to the district. Meg, 24 years; Scott, four.